I'd like to call the order, the workshop order on October 20th of 2020. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Vamato?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll skip over certification prior meeting, our privilege of the floor going in communication with the mayor, including disapproval messages, mayor's not here. Move on to number six, communication of public and petitions.
Number one, notice of claim from Jennifer Burdick of 18th St. Hedwig's Avenue for damages caused by sewer backup allegedly caused by roots in the main.
Any discussion, council? Need a motion to refer this to the city attorney and department of public works director, Randy Woodbury?
So move.
By Williams, second by Stoyl.
Number two, notice of claim from Carla Serku for personal injuries sustained allegedly from tripping and falling on a portion of sidewalk in front of 328 Central Avenue on July 9, 2020.
Any discussion, council? Same thing.
So move.
Williams? I need a second. Second.
By Stoyl.
Number three, ratification of request from Special Olympics New York to U. City Streets for their annual law enforcement Flame of Hope Run, October 21st, 2020. The run would start in Fredonia at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, and proceed along Central Avenue to Washington Park in Dunkirk and end by 9:30 a.m.
Any discussion, council?
I'll first.
By Vamato?
Second.
Nichols. By Nichols. Chief Edward, are you good with that?
We do this every year. Unfortunately, because of the COVID situation, it's going to be a little bit different. They're going to shorten it up, but it's very, very good program that does a lot of good work for Special Olympics, so I have no issue with it. We'll get it taken care of.
Awesome. Chief Edwards, you good with that? Good? All right. Richard, you're finding it also?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, number four?
Number four, request from Dunkirk Cub Scouts to do a beach cleanup on October 24th, 2020, rain date October 25th, 2020, and instructions of where to dispose of debris collected at the point.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, we could get these people, let them know that they better do the COVID thing, the mask, this and all that while they're out down there cleaning.
Yeah, we can follow up. Yeah, follow up on the procedures.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
The social distancing and inhale the mask on, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Did you want, did you want me to have the county follow up with you again as we did last time?
Chief?
I would say, the way things are at this point in time, yes, I would follow all the proper protocols and procedures and make sure that the county department of health is on board with it, and they say it's okay.
Pretty much like we did at Washington Park, correct? Chief Edwards?
I agree. Great.
Can we do the same thing what we did before?
Yes, sir.
Last week or two weeks ago.
I just have a question. What do they do with the stuff when they collect it?
Randy?
Our supervision picks it up. We help them out with bags and gators and stuff like that. It's a good thing.
I need a first by Vamato?
Second.
Second by Nichols. Okay, moving on to reports, sustaining committees, boards of commissions. Councilman Williams?
Nothing for the workshop.
Councilman Vamato?
Nothing.
Councilman Stoyl?
Nothing.
Nothing for the workshop. Medium. All right, unfinished business, see you none, go to prefile resolutions.
Number 98, resolution establishing 2020 Halloween trick-or-treat hours.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, we're going to amend it. We're going to change that to two to five.
So we're going to amend the hours of Halloween trick-or-treat from two to five?
Correct, yeah, and that resolved.
Okay.
That way, we're with the surrounding communities, everybody gets to go home at the same time. They won't be coming here, hopefully.
Okay, like I said, from two to five, and we'll leave that up to the parents and the guardians. If they want to do the trick-or-treat, they kind of, if you don't want to answer your door, I mean, that's another thing, so.
Put your light on if you want to. You're ordering trick-or-treats.
Or a note on the door to say no trick-or-treaters.
So, Jid, you're going to make the motion to amend, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Stoyl, and then?
I'll second.
Second by Williams?
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
I put out my usual Halloween trick-or-treating press release. I will include whatever you folks want in there as well, the hours and coronavirus issues and protocols, and don't go anywhere porch lights aren't on, so I'll revise our annual trick-or-treat media release to reflect that.
Yeah, thanks, chief. I appreciate that. We're like being a Saturday afternoon, we're trying to keep it in the afternoon so we won't have to hit the darks.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it starts to get dark at, what, 6:30 and all that stuff, so we've tried to do that prior, but we don't want to run it too long, but we want everyone to be safe also, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have one question on that. If things do take a turn for the worse with it, between you and the mayor, you'll make the call whether it's yea or nay to have it?
If the mayor feels that it's going to be canceled if things really get bad, we'll go out to media release, Facebook, city website, everything as soon as the mayor would make that decision.
Okay. 99?
99, resolution authorizing contracts for Sterns Building Roof Repair and Financing.
Any discussion, council?
At the, at the actual meeting, I think we'll ask Richard to get up to discuss the email that he sent out earlier today for that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate that. I know you and I had a discussion, I talked to some of the council members, just as long as we can present that the right way so everyone, so it's understandable by everybody.
Sure.
All right, thanks. 100?
Number 100, resolution for change of pay rate per legal position.
Any discussion, council?
An amendment that came out on that, sir?
Oh, yeah, that's right. We have an amended version of it, so then probably during the meeting, if we just have Edwin read the amended part, the amended resolution, and then I'll make the motion to accept that amended resolution.
Okay. I need a second.
Nichols.
Nichols. Any new business? Need a motion adjourned?
Well, if you guys have something real quick, I want to bring up. On Halloween, on the 31st, I've talked with the relatives tonight out on our night out committee, what we're going to do is set up on Fifth Street by Washington Park by the gazebo, and we're going to have a drive-by, we're going to have parents drive their kids by, put their Halloween bag out the window, and then we'll give them, you know, frisbees, the footballs, the things of that sort, so we can do some type of a community event for night out. We thought that would be the safest thing, rather than person-to-person contact, we'll be following protocol. I will contact Christine Skyler, myself, to make sure that everybody's okay for us to do a program like that, but I just wanted to bring it out tonight so everybody knows we're going to do the three to five on Halloween on Fifth Street by the gazebo to do something for night out, have some type of a community event for the kids from the police department.
Yeah, great idea.
Nice, nice.
We're good, two to five?
Three, we're going to do three to five. We're just going to do two hours.
So trick-or-treat hours would be two to five?
Two to five, and we're going to do some type of a community event from the police department. I talked to the fire chief, we'll have his guys there as well, so it'll be a community event for public safety on Halloween, no contact with sports, so.
Yeah.
We should be good to call.
Awesome.
Well, we hope not, Randy.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help, chief, appreciate it. New business?
Motion adjourned.
By Williams?
Nichols.
By second by Nichols. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Carry. Meeting's adjourned. Guys, ready? There you go. I'd like to call the regular common council meeting order on October 20th of 2020 at 5:31. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Vamato?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and please stay standard for a couple residents that we lost this week. It's been a terrible year, and we've still got a couple more months, but it would be for the honorable John Cusdale's mother and Jerry Haas, Gary's, and the Haas family also was employed at the city of Dunkirk. Great people and great losses, so we're going to stand for a couple minutes after. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Certification of prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, October 6, 2020, was presented to the mayor on Monday, October 19, 2020. Pursuant to section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, and witness whereof I have here to set my hand in the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York, this 20th day of October, 2020.
Need a motion dispensing the reading of the minutes?
So move.
By Williams?
Second.
By Nichols.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Carry. Readout of privilege of the floor, regulations, privilege of the floor. Do you have any today?
I have one, I have a letter from Cassandra Pinkowski. It says, hello, I have a request from Peter Pinkowski of 7th Lakefront Boulevard for a public comment portion of the common council meeting, October 20, 2020. His question is, what is the status of the LED replacement program for LED energy solutions? This project was approved in 2016 with a contract signed in 2018 during the mayor's campaign. It was stated that there would be 175,000 in annual savings to the city. In the two years since the contract was signed, what buildings have been completed currently? What buildings are still slated to be completed? Is street lighting still a part of the project? If the city has monitored and captured the actual amount of savings, what is it to date? If you could please reply by email also, if you have received this in proper time, I'm sorry, reply to this email, and we did.
Okay. Does anyone have an answer? Mayor?
Sure.
So, as you know, I have provided updates on the LED project to this council throughout the year. Because of COVID, the funding, which is over a million dollars for this project, was earmarked at the state and approved by the Financial Restructuring Board, was withheld. We have not received those funds. I have stopped the project until such time as we receive those funds. The good news is that I've directed our fiscal affairs officer to contact Albany every week. She's been doing that right along, and this week, update is that the funding process is going to be moving forward, so we expect to receive funds soon. I've been in contact with the contractor, and he is ready to start as soon as we start moving the process forward.
Awesome, thank you.
I have six letters.
Yeah, this letter's from Valerie Pavlock again, and some of the, her concerns were taken care of, but I will address this with the city council in our next workshop. Thanks. Okay. Communications of the mayor, including disapproval messages? Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
I'd just like to comment on the privilege of the floor. Sometimes, I know we're in weird times right now with this COVID and everything, so people can't come and they want to ask questions, but some of these questions, if it's pertinent and they need it all right away, they can just call their ward council person, and they can get back. If they don't have the answer, or if we don't have the answer, they can get back to the mayor, Randy, or someone else that had to send a week, only twice a month, and these are called, they can get their answer a lot quicker, and just use that as an example, so, let everybody know. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, just to reiterate on what Marty says, they can also use the website that's set up there with questions. Is that not correct? Councilman Williams?
I believe that's what's on there, yeah.
Okay. Communications of the mayor, including disapproval messages?
Mr. Chairman, I just have another update, the Lakefront Boulevard situation, we are moving forward with that. I have made contact with the contractor. We have a new contract that, we just added a couple of things to the other contract that was approved, basically, the two issues that we spoke about in executive session, the timeline. Contractor is agreeing to have the project 100% complete by Memorial Day of 21, 2021. And the payment plan will be that we're going to work with FEMA, the contractor's agreeing to work with us with the FEMA payment plan and that payment schedule. So that is very helpful to the city, and we're grateful to the contractor for that.
Are they going to, when are they going to start on? Do they have a date they're going to start on?
He has the contract, we sent him the contract this, this past week, I just spoke to him today, he has the contract, and he hasn't had a chance to look at it, but as soon as he signs it, he's going to be ordering the supplies and materials, and he said he'll probably have a crew here probably by next week.
Okay, thanks, mayor.
Mayor, if it's not finished by Memorial Day 2021, what's the, what happens then?
Well, then we'll get legal involved in it. Hopefully, it will be done by then. Again, the contractor, we have a very good relationship with this contractor, this is not the first time he's done work in the city. Initially, when we sat down, he would not agree to, to that timeline of Memorial Day. We began to speak a little bit more about it over last weekend, when I reached out to you, Paul, and I believe that he's going to have it done. If he does not have it done, then we can go after him for that. I'm hoping, of course, that we're not going to have to go there.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, because I believe he'll probably have it done then, too, just in the event that he didn't, is that something where we can push on him at the end of April, and if he's got to do costs outside of it that we're not in charge of, because he'd have to get it done by the end of May, is that something that would happen? I just was wondering on how, how that situation would play out.
We, we considered all the options, just so you know, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes communication on this thing, and the bottom line is that, you know, to get to the point where we're at now, there was a lot of work done. The process with FEMA and getting that plan approved was a long process. If we decided, I mean, we could have decided to rebid that project out after conferring with our DPW director, our city attorney, our development director, and with you, Paul, it was decided that what was best for the city was to try to work with this contractor. So in effort to get him to agree, we, we have been very lenient with the contract language. If he didn't agree, then our options would be that there is no timeline in the contract, or we rebid it and find another contractor. If we did that, we jeopardize paying more for this project, we also jeopardize the timeline with FEMA. So these are two reasons I really didn't want to go there.
Yeah, like you said, I'm more concerned about getting it done right instead of the timeframe, getting it done quick, so, obviously.
Well, he's, and again, the contractor also stated that same thing, that he wants to make sure it's done right, so, you know, my concern again is that I don't want to go next summer without this thing being completed.
Correct, correct.
And I've made it very clear to him, we did not add any penalty phases in that contract, so that's a good point you bring up, but again, to get him to agree to it was hard enough. If we start putting that stuff in there, he's probably not going to agree to it.
All right, just wondering, because if we get to the second meeting of May next year, and it's looking like it's not going to be done, I don't, I don't want us to wait until then to figure out what we're doing, so I think we're probably going to be bringing this up, you know, March, April, and see where we're at with it come, come May then, so we're not just trying to figure out what we can do then. But that's the only reason why I bring it up.
In my discussions with him, the only reasons that he has stated for not getting it done is weather, and because you can't predict the weather, he did not want to commit to this timeline. But he is committing to it, the language in the contract states that he will have it 100% done by Memorial Day. If he's very close and almost done, I don't, you know, I'm saying we could be a little lenient with him. If he's telling us he's not going to get it done till midsummer, then that's an issue we'll have to address.
Good.
So, so mayor, are you saying that he's not going to begin the work now, but he will be beginning the work in the spring?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying he is going to, in our last discussion, he told me he would start the work now.
Right.
He doesn't believe that there will be enough time before the weather turns for him to have it completed. If there is, and the weather is good, then he's telling me that he will have it completed before the end of the year, but he anticipates that that's not going to happen, and, and so what he is agreeing to is to have it completed 100% by Memorial Day of next year.
I just wanted to make it clear so that our viewing audience could understand that clearly, that's, I'm not giving you a hard time, I just, I know in our prior discussions we had said it would take X amount of time when we met before to get it completed, and the issue would have been the caps that would be going on the top of it.
Right.
And also, is there a chance that he could leave the Jersey barriers there for the winter as a safety shield for us?
Yeah, he's going to be working with our DPW director on that issue there. We talked about that, opening that road, and we normally keep that road closed during the winter anyway, so I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications for public and petitions?
Number one, notice of claim from Jennifer Burdick of 18th St. Hedwig's Avenue for damages caused by sewer backup and basement allegedly caused by roots in the main.
Any discussion, council? Need to refer this to the city attorney and department of public works director, Randy Woodbury?
So move.
By Williams?
Second by Stoyl. Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Number two, notice of claim from Carla Serku for personal injuries sustained allegedly from tripping and falling on a portion of sidewalk in front of 328 Central Avenue on July 9, 2020.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, has this issue been resolved with the sidewalk being repaired?
I can speak to that. Under the code, the adjacent property owners are generally responsible for maintenance, and I do know that that one is owned by the Lesser Family Trust, and Mr. Bankosh is managing for them. I know they did some cement work out there to kind of even it out, because it was a big drop-off on the one block. Doesn't look complete, but it's better, so I know they did something.
So there would not be any further, hopefully?
Correct. That's the goal.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to the city attorney?
So move.
By Williams?
Second by Stoyl. Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Number three, ratification of request from Special Olympics New York to U. City Streets for the annual law enforcement Flame of Hope Run, October 21st, 2020. The run would start in Fredonia 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, and proceed along Central Avenue to Washington Park in Dunkirk to end by eight, I'm sorry, 9:30 a.m.
Any discussion, council? I need a motion to refer this to a city attorney and both chiefs, Edwards and Ordolano?
First.
By Vamato?
Nichols.
Second by Nichols.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Number four, request from the Dunkirk Cub Scouts to do a beach cleanup on October 24th, 2020, rain date October 25th, 2020, and instructions of where to dispose of the debris collected at the point.
Any discussion, council?
We had a discussion during the workshop, but I think that Councilman Stoyl had said that wants to make sure that they're wearing, you know, face masks and stuff like that for the, the COVID stuff and follow the COVID protocols, and I also believe that Chief Ordolano had said that he would suggest that we run this through the health department, so just to have it on our official record that we're doing that now for the meeting, so if we could look into that for it, that would be great.
Okay, we'll do it. Need a motion to refer this to the city clerk, Ramos, for social distancing requirements and protocols. First by Vamato?
Nichols.
Second by Nichols.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Atlarc Vandenberg?
Aye.
Carry. Reports, sustaining committees, boards of commissions? Councilman Williams?
Well, since we have a guest filling in for Chief Ordolano today, just want to say happy birthday to Lieutenant Pukolski over there.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Happy birthday.
Council will be on WDOE viewpoints on Friday at 8:45 a.m., so anybody who wanted to tune in to listen, go ahead. Those that want to shut off to not listen, that's, that's prerogative, too, I guess, but we will be on on, on Friday morning at 8:45. I believe it's Councilwoman Nichols and I that are, are going to be on there this week. Randy, I want to just say thanks to you and, and Jason and the Parks crew and anybody else that was involved in getting that bench set up and in place for the, in memory of the Mr. and Mrs. Pucciarelli, and that was all set up by former resident Frank Feckety, who grew up in that neighborhood, knew the family, and got a hold of all the, all the old neighborhood guys, and they donated money to, to get that bench in place, so thank you for getting that in there. And also would like to give a shout out to Jason Sislavich, the Parks Department supervisor, for getting, getting that flag changed pretty quick from when it was mentioned to us that it, it needed to be changed over at the point. And that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Council Vamato?
Yes, Randy, I noticed National Fuel's been doing some digging in the second ward on Second and Swan, and Sixth and Dove. Can you give us a little update, what's going on, and when they're going to be completed?
Sure, councilman.
Thank you.
The, we have a good relationship with National Fuel, and I'll speak with them, and I'll, and I'll let you know exactly. They, they're very good with response, and when they're done, they contract out the finishing of the road and everything else like that. Also, it's important to know that their infrastructure's like our infrastructure, gas lines will wear out over time, so it's a benefit to the, it's a temporary inconvenience to the, to your neighborhood, but it's a permanent improvement. The new gas lines that are going in are new technology, they don't leak, so it, overall, it's safer, and it's a better improvement, so a little bit of patience with the neighbors, and then the exact time period for getting it all done, I'll find out for you.
Okay. The one on Sixth, Sixth Street and Dove, it's not in the street, it's on the grass, and they dug it up, I mean, I understand they got to replace these plates, they put a fence around, and it's blocking the kids going up and down the sidewalk, and I know they're not in school, most of them, but there's activities there seven days a week, so I, I ran by there today, and a little concerned with that, I had to bear off into the street and back on the sidewalk. Maybe the kids can, the school could talk to the kids, walk across the street up on the other side.
I'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That's just, that's a barrier for safety, so we'll worry, but I'll, I'll get you some answers tomorrow morning.
And also, Halloween, everybody, I hope they have a safe and happy Halloween. Please, parents, make sure your kids are safe, social distance, go to the house with the lights on, and I know we're starting possibly at 2:00 p.m. this year, but if you have the light on, you'll be able to see it, you'll know to go to that house. If you don't have a light on, and I suggest you don't, I also suggest you go to your close friends, relatives' house, and, and people that you know, and, and people that you're near all the time, and let's go to that route this year if we can. But everybody, please be safe, this COVID is for real, everybody in this room probably knows somebody that has it right now in the community, so let's try to do the right things. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, councilman. Council Stoyl?
Yeah, Randy, I came with a chief letter from Mr. Marka.
Yes, sir.
Lafayette and water pressure and the hydrants.
The fire chief and I spoke about that, we've spoke about that over the years. Lafayette is an area we want to hit with a new water main. We, we built the sealed street water main in order to be able to feed that, so we're kind of halfway there. The whole area of Central Avenue and all those feeder streets, both toward Second Ward and Third Ward, are, are, have, were deficient. Now that we built the sealed street water line, we can charge up that line, we tried to charge up Lafayette, and Lafayette line is so old that when we put more pressure in it, it breaks quite a bit, so that needs a new line. I work with development and... and Third Ward, are, are, have, were deficient. Now that we built the sealed street water line, we can charge up that line. We tried to charge up Lafayette, and Lafayette line is so old that when we put more pressure in it, it breaks quite a bit. So that needs a new line. I work with development and, and the chief and everybody else, and we have a new crew in water maintenance, and I, and they've, they're doing very well. I think it's something we could do in-house and get that done, new fire hydrants and lines that don't break all the time.
Randy, could you give me a favor, a huge favor, and call Mr. Varka?
I'll do more than that. I'll go over and talk with him.
There you go.
Yep.
There you go.
Happy to.
You're going to make me look, though.
Not a problem. Appreciate it. Okay.
And Al, you're going to take care of that, that note I gave you on 59th February? I already got with the message with the president. Okay. Yeah, talk to them, have them order, explain what you're claiming, please. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nichols.
Thank you, Paul. Rebecca, I just have a question, question for you, is when you apply for a grant, who makes the decisions on what grants you apply for?
So in the past, we've looked at what our community plans have included and what projects are in those plans. It's a community division, community process. The Planning and Development Department is using our comprehensive plan that was approved in 20, the end of 2019 on making those decisions. And based on priorities, some easy-hanging fruit, what we can do publicly, and also what kind of match funding is available to get projects done, is how we kind of prioritize those projects.
The reason I'm asking is because there's been quite a few unhappy residents and taxpayers in the city on that Lake Shore Drive corridor improvement that seems to be going to happen. And I don't know when and who was involved in making that decision, but their concern is there's empty lots, empty buildings, there's nothing on Lake Shore Drive per se. There is more motorist traffic than there is pedestrian traffic, and they just, they look at the roundabout, the Askel in Fredonia and the tear-up that they're doing now, and they're very concerned on, is that same thing going to happen in Dunkirk? Is that, is there now? And why is the need there when there's not that much foot traffic?
So this is all a part of revitalization of our downtown or waterfront area. Since the moment I came here in 2016, our Brownfield Opportunity Area Grant, or Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan specifically looked at projects that the community wanted, such as improving the pier. That was one of the projects in the plan. Lake Shore Drive Complete Streets Project was one of those projects. All of these projects are meant to spur private investment in our waterfront as well. And it's kind of, what do you build first? Does a private investment come first, and then you do those public improvements? Well, we're kind of working in the opposite direction because we don't see as much private investment yet, but investment in our pier, in our waterfront, in those streets, making it more pedestrian-friendly, making it more beautiful, attracts that development. So that's the whole point, is that we're doing these projects that bring in more private development in the hopes that we can get more developers interested in those vacant lots, bring in more pedestrians, bring in more foot traffic. And with that, you have to take into account the safety of the corridor. So that, that's the reasoning for that project.
Now, is there, I know we discussed it many times before, is there a possibility that you could work with the mayor and Mr. Woodbury on finding a grant or different grants to look at the drainage issues and within the city of our, for, for our current residents and taxpayers?
Yep, there's definitely those programs available, but this year there is not. New York State's grant funding, most of that funding is through our consolidated funding applications that are in July, and this year, New York State has not released any of those grant applications. So we have talked about putting in for something this past year, but unfortunately, it just isn't available. So I'm keeping my eyes and ears open to see if those CFAs are going to be released this year, but we're just, we just don't know.
Because I know in Don's Ward, there's a great money areas that my ward, I know Jidge has some in his, Marty, and I mean, we're all, it's all, all old.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, and that's infrastructure across the country.
I know, that's why, that's why I'm addressing it.
You know, not just Dunkirk, not just New York.
Because Dunkirk doesn't have the money, so if there is something out there, if you could keep your ears open to see if you, what, what would be available to help us out?
Definitely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just, it's been a great many years. I know the Harbor Commission asked about it. I asked before I was elected, I asked when I was elected, if there's going to be any movement at all finding the ownership of those abandoned boats that are down at the lake area that's been in, under blue wraps, and if we can find owners, if we're getting any money from them, if they can be moved out, sold, or whatever. And I know Rich had said that it's a long process. Well, has there been any movement on that at all to get them out of there? Because that's an eyesore, and from what I understand, that there are homeless that are living in some of the boats.
Ms. Nichols, I don't think that's been a priority, frankly. So that's not even my top 10 list, but what I can tell you is generally, any private property that goes unclaimed essentially is cheese to the state. So essentially, we would have to coordinate with the state to move those boats, and then they would probably put them in some kind of auction program, I would think, if there's any value to them, or they would scrap them. Given the current condition of things in the pandemic, I doubt the state's going to move on that anytime soon, but it's definitely something we can put on the radar, hopefully for next year if things get better.
Well, I'm sure if, if someone contacted the state, there would be a, and they gave you the okay on it, that a salvage company could come in, and I know there's salvage companies all over the South that would be coming in to readily purchase some of those at a good price. I mean, some of them, I know what they're doing with some of them is interiors of homes with a lot of the wood and everything that's in those boats.
Okay.
But if, if maybe the mayor can give you the go-ahead to do that, to, to look at it and work with Mr. Woodbury, because he's really attuned, I've been talking with him on that. Those are an eyesore down there. They've been there for probably 20, 25 years, and I'm sure the city's not getting any money at all from them. They're just occupying space that could be utilized for something else.
Right. So just so you understand, it's a private property issue, so it's, the same principle applies like when you have an abandoned house. If you have an abandoned house and it's titled to a private family, for example, or a person, we can't just go in and do what we want with it. We'd have to seek out who the owner is, you'd have to do a title search. In this case, I'm assuming that'd be through the DMV. So there would be some legwork involved. It's not something where we can just go in and tell a salvage company, have at it. It's a little more complicated than that. And that's why, again, priority-wise, I don't think that's a top 10 priority for the city, but I will be happy to look into that for you and get some more information.
But if, and when they were first placed there, weren't they paying a storage fee to be in there?
I don't know. That would be a question for the marine operator. I wouldn't have that information readily available, but we can find that out.
Well, the city was the operator when, obviously, when those boats were initially put there.
The city has been, is leasing out and has had a marine operator since the city took over those marina properties. So the city was never directly involved in managing the boats and figuring out who's paying what. That's always been the operator's purview.
So somebody's been lax for quite a long time. Okay. I have a question for the mayor. With the cold weather coming, we need to do something with, like a Code Blue place for these people that are living in dumpsters currently in the city, and I've witnessed it, people coming out of them now, early in the morning. And I don't know if the city has a plan in effect. I know last year you had talked about something, but with the code, the virus, it's, it's a very scary situation, and you would hate to find someone frozen to death on a corner or behind a building. Can you work with rural ministries or something to see if they can come up with a plan?
I think what you're referring to is homelessness, and there is a plan at the county level. We have different organizations throughout the county, including in the city of Dunkirk, that handle that. One of them is Chitaco Opportunities. There may be others, but I'm not aware of right now. So there already is a plan in place, and we just need to partner up with them. If there are locations where there are homeless people, then that needs to be addressed. The police can be involved in that, and they will be addressed accordingly.
Well, there is a dumpster over at the Salvation Army that has a small side door, and there are people, and it's not locked. The dumpster part is, but as my daughter goes to work in the morning, there are people coming out of the dumpster that they've obviously been there all night long. And also, the dumpster by Family Dollar, when I went to the bank a few Saturdays ago, there was a young girl crawling out of the dumpster at 10 after 8:00 in the morning. And I don't know what, what to say. I mean, I feel bad that they are crawling out of dumpsters, but what does the city do?
Well, the police department becomes involved, and again, there's a process. I can let the officer speak to that.
Right, as far as the Code Blue, there is, there is a process in place for that. These people, they come to the police department, they will form a police office, and if it's below 323s, as you're speaking, and there are hotels in the local area that will take them in for a certain period of time.
That, that's all well and good, but how do we let these people know that?
They, most of them are aware of it.
Okay.
They, they've utilized it in the past, also, you may be speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, nothing, this time. Unfinished business? Seeing none, good.
Yeah, I forgot this in my speech. My, my this is going to go with you and Randy. Dave and I have talked about it, the Robin Street tunnel. If it wasn't up to me, I'd cement the whole damn thing closed. They found, you know, they're bringing neighbors out of there, let me take it. And the chief suggested maybe we could find some money to put cameras down there so it comes into the station.
Yeah.
Really did as well.
So at the, I believe it was DPW committee meeting, that issue was brought up, and we've been looking into the cost analysis of putting cameras in there. We are very close to proposing a deal with DFT to have cameras in there with a monitor here at the police station.
Yeah, because they're coming in, they're coming in from Robin Street and coming in from Third Street. They meet in the middle, do their action, and then away they go. And that neighborhood, they're, they want help.
Yes, definitely, I agree with it, and that's why I support having the cameras in. Sergeant Manzella is actually the lead person for the city, working with DFT to get these cameras in there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Prefilled resolutions.
Excuse me. Number 98, resolution establishing 2020 Halloween trick-or-treat hours.
Any discussion, council?
I think Jidge was making a motion.
Yeah, make a motion to amend.
I second it.
So what we're going to plan on doing is we're going to make a motion to amend trick-or-treat hours. We decided it was going to be 3:00 to 5:00, but we're going to amend it to 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. So a motion to amend by Stoyl, second by Williams.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarch Vandervoer.
Aye, carried.
Motion to vote on the trick-or-treat hours.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarch Vandervoer.
Aye.
99.
Number 99, resolution authorizing contract for Stern's Building Roof Repair and Finance.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, if we could, the City Attorney sent us an email earlier today describing some things to it, so if he could get up and speak to it, so it's actually on our, our council record, then that would be great.
Sure, thank you, Councilman. Again, the issue here is generally for any project over $30,000, under both the city procurement policy and general municipal law that it tracks, usually you have to go through a public bid process. And you look for three bids, and then we look not only at price, but we also have the fair contracting bidder language that's now incorporated into our procurement policy. And that's, that's typical. But there are exceptions to that rule in both the state law and the procurement policy that tracks it. Emergent needs, so if there's an emergency need and we had a timing issue, and in this particular case, there are two exceptions that apply. That was there because of the timing, there was leaks, but also because of the, the timing as we're going into the winter season. But the most important thing is the exception under general municipal law, Section 104B, subsection 2, sub subsection F, which essentially says that we can dispense at the discretion of the council with a solicitation of alternative proposal or quotations under certain circumstances when it's not in the best interest of the municipality. What that essentially means is sometimes it makes sense just to get the right contractor and go to it. In this particular case, the issue is, feral roofing is large and successful enough, and it is well-capitalized, that they can essentially, in, in terms of, or in lieu of financing, where usually you have a finance charge, you may or may not have collateralization, a lien on the property, here, all they're doing is essentially providing a deferred payment plan with no interest. Because essentially, it functions as just a rent payment for them, and they don't need the cash. And that's a wonderful thing. They also happen to be Dunkirk-based, they have strong relationships with the community and with many of the elected officials here, so it just made sense. This is something we did back in 2017. At that point in time, Mayor Rosas went through this, and it was decided they would go that way. Just to be doubly sure, he went through the bid process. On top of that, we lost a season, we had more roof damage, and there was more repair to be done in the spring. So this just obviates that, and it, it's perfectly legal under both New York State law and the city's procurement policy.
Yeah, I just, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I also just wanted to add that we did bid it out the last time, even though we, we didn't have to, it was a mandatory, and when we bid it out, feral roofing ended up winning that bid as well. So again, in my opinion, it's a pretty good deal, a pretty good contractor, and again, the deferred payment plan fits with our ability to pay.
And they've also done, the fire departments also, and many roofs in the city.
Historical society, this building.
Yeah, it was just, I think this council, and when I contacted Richard today, just the council's been fielding a lot of phone calls on the price and everything, so we just want to make sure that we're doing it legally and as far as going out to bid, and, and, you know, whether, whether this council that's sitting on here now, present or not, would have voted to purchase that or not, that's something, but we own it now, we got to maintain it, so. I just wanted to make sure you guys clarified that to the residents of the city of Dunkirk, what we're doing.
No problem.
Thank you.
And then I, I just ask because in the, in the first part of that, it says you've got questions from the comptroller's office, so if they're asking questions, I just want to make sure we're doing this right.
Yeah. You got it? Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Adlarch Vandervoer.
Aye, carried.
Number 100, resolution for a change of pay rate paralegal position.
Any discussion?
I'd like to have the City Clerk read a proposed amendment, and then after he reads it, I'd like to make a motion to accept that amendment in its place.
Amended resolution number 100-2020, October 20, 2020, by councilmembers Nichols and Williams, change of pay rate paralegal position. Williams, change of pay rate paralegal position. Whereas this council would like to increase the pay rate to $26.10 an hour, or an annual salary of $47,500 at 35 hours per week, and whereas the pay rate issued is now uncoupled from resolution number 79-2020 that was passed unanimously on July 7, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that this council approve the salary rate increase of $26.10 per hour, retroactive to the period beginning July 6, 2020.
Should I move we amend it to this?
Motion by Williams.
The second one.
Second by Nichols.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember I. Larg Van de Boer.
Aye, carried.
Motion to vote on this.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember I. Larg Van de Boer.
Aye, carried.
New business, any new business? Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I just want to formally inform the council, I will be vetoing that resolution. As we spoke in executive session, you know my reasons, I also want to let you know that the grace period for the charter, 10 days, can start today.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Motion adjourned.
So moved.
By Williams.